I think we'll call the meeting to order. Are you turning on the electronics? Thanks, Dan. Trying to remember to use this. I don't very much, I know. And I've got that loud voice, I think I do. But then sometimes, in different areas, it's hard to hear and having a hard time. So we'll try to keep it where it's hearable, I guess is the word. Want to direct your note? The open meeting notice is on the table back there, which makes us legal. And we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Cable call, roll call, but Bob?
Present.
Larry?
Here.
Don?
Here.
And James?
Here.
Like to draw attention to the new decade. Isn't that neat? See, that pile up there says that we're using our auditorium for wrestlers. So that's always a fun thing. And I was in the other night after one of the practices, and the guys were, you know, doing the spray down and the cleaning them all up and taking care of them as they should be and so forth. Got a nice group turned out, I think. Our high school ones are doing well, and that's my sport. So I will enjoy this next season. Of course, that's about family, isn't it, for me to think about it? Because I enjoy girls' basketball. Okay, so, under the heading of request and public comment, I'm going to open that up if anybody in the public would like to say anything. I don't have anything. We don't have any requests for any liquor licenses or anything like that. We should put that. If anybody wants to say anything. And then the council should have a copy of all the minutes. They had packets actually delivered to their door last week because there was two sets of packets. And so should have had time actually to read and so forth. So minutes of the November 7th meeting, we would ask that somebody would, or that we would comment about changes and/or approve.
I'll make a motion for November, oh, excuse me, November 7th, a city council meeting.
I'll second.
Motion by Bob and seconded by Larry to approve the November 7th council, regular council meeting. Roll call vote would be Larry?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
And Bob?
Yes.
Then on November 10th, there was a special meeting. This agenda says regular, but that was a special meeting. I am assuming the minutes are hidden. I guess I didn't bring in a copy.
The minutes are hidden.
The... Okay, so we would need a motion to approve the November 10th meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve November 10th meeting.
Okay, motion by Larry?
I'll second.
Seconded by Bob. Roll call vote, Don?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
But you were not there, right?
No. True, I was not there.
So you have, yeah, I just wanted to make, just so we're right.
You're right, yep.
And Bob?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
Then on September 12th, there was a meeting, and we've had, been a while to get the video and to get the minutes read. So those are in your packet though. So we need to get those approved and move on to. So the September 12th meeting is, if we could get a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion to approve this September 12th city council.
Okay, motion by Bob. Second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Larry. And then the roll call vote would start. James?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And Don?
I was absent, so.
Yep. Okay. The financial statements and claims. The claims are in the packet. Do I have a copy?
I think it's in here.
Well, they've gotten, all you've got to do is, if you, I'm sure you had a chance to look at them. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to pay the claims for November, December meeting.
I'll second.
For the December meeting, which is this one?
Yes.
So motion by Larry. Was that you, James?
Yes.
Yeah. You're getting this. So the vote would be with James?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And Don?
Yes.
Okay, and the reports of committees, economic development?
Nothing.
Nothing? Planning and zoning, a seaming mic?
We're proceeding, I guess proceeding with the rezoning of the northeast section of the Crofton area.
And that they've had in their hands, so they can follow up?
Nothing new.
Anything from the tree board, what's the seaming? Okay. And no cemetery. We had a report from them toward all that paperwork's in there with their recommendations. Chief Carter, would you like to give your report now?
That is fine. Good evening, everyone. I pass out to the council our report for November. If any of you have any questions about any of the items that are there for the activity for November 2022. We still have the home point of burglary investigation for the smoke shop. There are some suspects that we have, but because at least one of them is a juvenile, we don't, we can't really discuss a lot of that right now. But we're waiting for some forensics to come back from the lab that we sent to the Nebraska State Patrol. Once a few things are confirmed, then we will be putting out information about that incident and the parties responsible for that as that comes in. Also, I would like to let council know and the people here in town know that the incident that occurred on December 2nd at the high school for the unlawful intrusion did not involve Crofton students. It was, they were all students from Laurel Hospital. From the Laurel School, not high school, but from the Laurel School. And as far as update on the grant, I talked to Don Hart from, from the prime commission. He said that that JAG grant still has not been released yet. He said that they're behind, but by before the end of the month, they will have some of those monies released. But they got several pots of money that they're going to release. They just have been behind in some of the planning and the strategic planning. Probably going to issue some of that money out that they got from the federal government and the state. So maybe by the next year that we have, we'll have an update on that. But he said that it'd be before the end of December, but he just didn't have anything that he can let us know definitively. Not because they have not been given the authority to release anything to anyone in the state at this point from the prime commission. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. I jokingly said to Donna that I was going to do a state of the city of report. She said she thought that was awful. But of course, we are at the end of my era. You do not, I just want to make one statement in this. You do not have financial reports tonight because I went into that computer several times and there are figures missing from September, October, whatever's going on. I've talked with Eddie today. I've talked, that was mostly just telling them we have a new person in the office and so forth. We've talked to several of the girls several times. Still trying to figure out part of what's going on. We don't know exactly what might have got dropped. We know some got dropped. We also know that just from sheer lack of time and lack of ability to find that time, that there are figures missing. For example, the, who called us today?
They called.
No. The sense, it's in the, the sense of email. One of the things on you that you approved on your bill was the seventy thousand dollar payment on the, on the New Sharon Street thing. And I, about two weeks ago, I said, or a week ago, I said to Donna, there's a payment due on that on the 15th of December. Where's the paperwork? And we couldn't find anything. We had, we had an amortization schedule. It started out with 21, said zero, and I read it as 22. I didn't know why they put December 21, we didn't approve it in 21. But they called today and said, we usually get set up a date when you're going to wire that. And I said, yeah, we haven't heard from you. And he said, oh, yeah, we did, but that's a new firm, see? So that didn't go. The email got left over from anybody that did open it. Donna's been here such a short time that she doesn't recognize those emails and where they're from. And that's about a two-hour job every day, to go through all those and weed out what's what. So we did get in touch with the bank. We did get everything done so that it will get there on time. They'll wire it out tomorrow morning or whatever, checks. So the, like, the, we seem to be missing paperwork for some of the months for what comes into the counties. Now, what went out of the computer, according to Hannah, who worked with us on this, what disappeared there can be found by going through the bank statements. They're in the bank, not a problem. So we can go through those bank statements and enter them, and it's there. But they're not in the computer. I mean, the money's not in the bank. It means it's not in the computer, which kind of scared considering we've got about one and third, 1.3 million. We've got even more. And it's not recorded. We're probably setting pretty good about now. But same is going to be true on that other end, you know, to make sure that all the bills are paid. So no doubt about it, books are not in perfect shape, but there is nothing inappropriate with the books. I also want to make a statement, I believe. I didn't know if I was going to do that tonight or not. I didn't write anything out, didn't know where I was going. But a week of end of term, end of year, and trying to straighten out an already tough mess was taken away from my work schedule by a gentleman that came in to do an audit, who is not a CPA, and whose work was based upon this council's vote to bring in a CPA to do a full audit. And I believe that is exactly the words of the motion. The man has a few letters after his name that says he can do income tax. So can I. And I'm not a happy camper about that, but that's a decision you guys made. We got a bill from them today, yesterday. And Donna called them and said, I think we want to pay a bill without a report. And the state auditor, who had called, just happened to call during that whole process. And I told him they were there, and he said, well, tell them to send their report to us because there's no sense, both of us doing the same thing. Their estimate was no more than 20,000. The bill they sent us was at 16,000. So when the call was made today, he said, it's not a full bill because there could be more because the report's not done yet. So you can bet it's going to be pretty close to the 20. Our estimate that Mr. Evans signed the paperwork to have the state do this year's full audit and legal audit that we do every year, estimated the work to come in at about sixteen, under 16,000 or under. Last year it cost us 11,000. The year before that, it was 10,000, and I think one year it was 9,000. Because I always kidded them that if I got the books in good shape and they spent less time here, I could keep it under 10,000. And then I'd say, whose fault is that? So we've had a good relationship with our auditor. There's nothing that is called for, for an extra audit here. So just for those of you who care enough to come to a meeting, know that. So with that in mind, we have a couple more business things we have to take care of tonight. There is a resolution of the annual municipal certification of program compliance of highway allocation. Every year, we have to do the paperwork. Our street superintendent keeps doing this. I could just say, Steve, take care of this. Then he came to saying, no, you do it. Mayors are doing that. Now they're doing, somebody else doing it. And they're having the clerks send, just send a resolution in, and then they take care of it. What it says is that we had a street superintendent who was available to us for advice and who did a one-to-five-year plan. And we've had that same plan for quite some time, as you know. And we can add and subtract from it. There's also then the certification that we did in fact have a street superintendent. Those two things had to be signed and sent to the state. So they have to be. And they have to have the minutes attached. So we are asking you to approve that resolution that's in your packet. I thought there was two resolutions, and they dropped the second resolution. They don't need a resolution. It's just a matter of us certifying, just swearing that it got done. That we pay Steve Carr $1,000 a year to be our street superintendent. And because we have a street superintendent, the state pays us $1,000. So the steeds, the fees are kind of breaking them. The other resolution, I had put in, we had to have a resolution for release of lanes, but then I never found anything, Mike. Maybe you can show us some light. We just do it because we have to, right? We don't need a resolution. So with, let's, let's take care of the resolution for the highway person, okay? They're in your packet, so I need to, I would like to have a motion. Can you read it? It's right there.
Yeah.
Would you read it, Donna?
It says, it needs to be, the motion moved the adoption of said resolution. The resolution is number 1213, 2022, in parentheses, one. I just need an adoption of that resolution.
So if we could have a motion by someone to adopt that resolution?
I'll make a motion to adopt that resolution.
Motion by James?
Second.
Seconded by Bob. And the vote will go Bob?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And James?
Yes.
Then also, do we have to approve that signature, that certification? Did we have to put anything in that?
There's no resolution for it. If you'd like to approve that she...
Let's just, just ask for a motion to approve that certification. Then that will be in the minutes also, and that all goes to the state office. But let's do a separate motion and vote.
I'll make a motion to approve the certification of the street superintendent.
Okay, motion by Bob, second by?
I second it.
By Larry. Roll call vote, Don?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And Bob?
Yes.
There is another, I just want to comment briefly on the Sharon Street lanes. The lanes were filed when the, when those assessments were first assessed against the, the blocks. That was in 2018. Each lot had, you know, water, sewer, street, whatever. And those were all broken down, and then the interest was against each one. We have collected that money to try to help save, to save a little money if having to pay the county and not charge too much interest to the landowners, et cetera. And right away, in the early days, a lot of people, because maybe they only have the street or they have, you know, they had a small portion of it, they just paid them off. So we've used that money to make payments. And of course, the city side's got to come in here someplace. And we have some money in there now. We have, I don't even realize, I guess I didn't make the financial statements, but there's 250,000 or something like that in the, in the bank account plus the 50,000 bond or CD and so forth. So we've got some money. The, what we found out as we went on was that as those lots sold, then we would get a phone call and say, I'm trying to do a title search here, and there's the lane on those properties. Well, that's just common. You file a lien when you have some motion, that's common practice. Unfortunately, if they got paid off right at the beginning, they were never released. So in this past year and a half or whatever, as we've worked through this, we've talked with the county and said, you know, and finally, Arlene put together, well, we found the original, for one thing, we found the original list. Because although we had the lots, we didn't know exactly how they were bought. So we found the original list, and Arlene went through and checked everything and said, these are the people that still owe and still should have lanes. Can you check and see if all the rest, who else of the rest of them need released, et cetera? So Joanne came back from the county and said, these people still have lanes which that these have to be. So we've gone through in this weekend, prepared. Get the read?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, thirty-eight lots were released. So you'll see a check in there for 380 dollars because they cost $10 a piece. So Monday morning, we shipped that off to, and it has to be the original. So we got those, found the lien thing and got them all together. So we have four, five, six, seven, about seven lots that still have money owed us. So they're almost paid off. And I've prepared a spreadsheet for each one of those lots. So it would be an easy pro, well, I have to help from my brilliant son. Arlene had stopped it with, started with her brilliant son. So see, our pay's off, have a brilliant son. So we have these spreadsheets that, and Pat went in and highlighted it so that our new clerks, all they have to do is put the date in and put the amount in, and everything else is figured from, to the nats, I, one penny interest is figured. So the big problem there, you see, is you can't take interest in penalty as, or interest in principal as listed on the, on the schedule because you have to figure interest to date. So if they pay that a day early, you have to reduce that interest if they pay a date, et cetera. Then there's the thing, if they're late, they have to pay 14% on the payment. So it can get complicated. Happy to report that is taken care of. It'll be a piece of cake from here on out. With that said, we have one more resolution, which is the release of the signings of the checks for the city. That's in front of you. My understanding is that Arlene, I haven't heard anything just in this week, but last week I visited with her Beth, and she was, thought they'd be home like the end of this week. So that's good news.
We do love her resignation.
And we did get her resignation, yes, do, and what else? Then we are assuming that, I guess I didn't even get a chance to talk to Shelley, but we're, we're getting to a clerk, and the next mayor will do his choices of that. So we're taking everybody off the bank account, et cetera. You've got to have somebody in here to keep going. So that's what that's about. And the bank has been pushing us to get that straightened out and get a great name on the signature cards, right? So with that, we'd like a resolution, a motion to pass that resolution.
I'll make a motion to pass that resolution.
Do you have a, is that number one?
Seven, three, huh?
Two.
Yes, everybody's off the dollar.
Resolution 1213, 2022, two.
Okay, motion by James to pass resolution for bank signature.
I'll second.
Seconded by Larry. Roll call, James?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Okay, so then with that, this is kind of a gray area in the code book, but it kind of says the old council that's going out kind of retires their staff. And I don't think that, that we have a lot of staff. But then we will bring the new board members up.
Can we do something about this?
Oh, yeah, 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 sorry. Patrick would like you to take a look at those because those were a thought for out at the, at the dump. Thought maybe if we put some visual signs out there, it could stop people from dumping stuff they're not supposed to dump. Get it big enough to catch everybody's eye and try to separate out some of that stuff so they're not spending more time than they need to trying to clean people's trash out of the trees and so forth and so on.
There is also a few posts. We've got some posts that have been damaged, so that, that...
That includes some of that?
Bottom line also includes some fiberglass marking posts and a few, and a few other ads that we are in need of, that we are running out of as well. So in that total, is, is more than just the dump signs.
Okay, I guess you would want an approval. Go ahead and get those, is that right, that what we're looking at? So if you would, then they'd like to comment or ask questions or whatever, or make a motion to approve, we can, then you can get them ordered.
Do we have a big issue out there? People dumping stuff with the shit?
Yes. Big issue. We've got people coming in with balconies and crap and old, you know, old wood.
Garbage and concrete, dirt and concrete, everything mixed, you name it. It's, it's not a terrible problem, but...
That's why we lock it.
Once every couple of months, somebody pulls something, if not more.
Yep.
And the signage out there isn't the greatest. I figured this proposal would spell it out pretty simply and pretty clear. And the compost piles getting sticks and bags and garbage and, and a family that's willing to take it. So we don't have to figure out how to get rid of it. We, we fill pickups when we're loading it, just pulling the garbage out of the compost pile.
But they're, but, but the nice thing is they are taking it out there. And they are, and, and there is that possibility, people just don't understand.
Right, but it takes, it takes time away from other things that we could do.
Yeah.
And the signage isn't real clear. I thought this might be the simplest, and it's reflective. It's, it's similar to the, the rest of the signs around town as well. So they will last quite a few years. And I'm open to other ideas. That was just an idea I had.
Do they give you an estimate on how long it takes to compare these to? Have any...
I did not ask that. The art department at this company prepared this, and they've been waiting for our answer. I don't think it would take. Of course, by the time we give them, they probably have frozen ground, so you'd have, it's gonna take... Probably have to wait until spring to get the pulse of the ground. But I'm thinking lead time was four to six weeks, if I remember correctly.
I'll make a motion to approve the sign, I think that's a good idea.
Motion by James?
I'll second.
Seconded by Don. I'm glad to hear you, Don. We don't want you to... We don't want you too quiet on this. Roll call vote from Don?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And Larry? Okay, so we must encourage that you get to order your signs. And there's one more thing that somehow did not get on the agenda. Although we know it was there, and some gremlin came and took it off. We had advertised for the sale of the, um, Crown Vic. So we had three bids. It was in the paper for two weeks. The second cop car.
Oh, I didn't, didn't hear what you were talking about.
We, yeah, we talked about, you know, I'd made the remark, just call a junk dealer, call that thing off. And Patrick came in and said, well, somebody's asking about that Crown Vic. And I said, of course. After, you know, after clunkers for cash, you know, what, there's none of this stuff left around?
We talked about the Crown Vic, we talked about Ford.
The Crown Vic is a Ford, but I'll forgive you that.
No, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Jason. It's, it's the car.
Yes, it's the car.
It's the car. The, the, the other one had, they've taken the stuff, you took that to Nyderr, did you?
Yeah.
Uh, the Moody Motors said they'd put it on the lot and sell it for whatever one out of it or make, you know. So it's, it's for sale.
Did we keep the, the equipment in there?
No.
So they got all the radios, radios and everything in that car yet?
No, we kept it locked.
Yeah, so, um, so, so maybe this guy's completely stripped it. So all, all the decals, radios, lights, all that stuff is out, and we have that, uh, here in the auditorium. So that is secure. And so it's just a car. This is just a regular vehicle. And the same with the Crown Vic. They went in and they stripped everything out of it, so it's, it's, it's just four wheels and a body, that's all it is.
And we got three bids? We got three bids on that?
Three sealed bids.
Three sealed bids?
Ready to open?
Yes, you open, will you?
Uh, the highest bid gets it. All right? Where's yours, Don?
Well, I'm still worried about the animal patrol here. I'm worried about people calling in for minks, so...
So the first one is for two thousand dollars. The second one is eight hundred and twenty dollars. Five hundred and one point ninety-nine. So guess what? Well, we just got a two thousand dollar deal. Richard Nickle, and I, I'm sure that's an N, N-I-C-K. I believe he's the gentleman that was with Johnson Sewer.
He was driving...
Because he was definitely asking that.
With, with the camera and jet crew that was cleaning sewer.
Okay, so we've got his phone number. Donna can call that in the morning and tell him he owns the car.
You should probably have a motion to accept that.
Oh, okay, I'll call for a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept two thousand dollar bid on that Crown Vic.
Motion by Bob, second by Larry. Roll call vote. Uh, we'll start with Larry.
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
And Bob?
Yes.
Are we done, ma'am? Okay, um, so then we have, um, I have the oath of office for both Bob and, uh, Jason. If they want to come up here, um, they can take the oath together, and I'll throw you in, and then you, then we'll close immediately. What?
I've got one thing to ask for, is what's our council?
Okay.
I, I was going to put it on my report. It's been brought to my attention that the state wants proof that the diving boards at the swimming pool are...
Let's take that up with the next council.
Of that, take it up with the next one, please. Okay.
Please do. I'm, because, yeah. It's not on the agenda. Somehow, it may be on the next agenda. They have to report that I... Yes, letter of resignation from Bob. We'll put that in with Arlene. You'll need the original. Please.
I, Bob Evans. Yep. I swear before the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of State Nebraska, against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the Saint, that I will take on location freely and without mental reservation or the purpose of the vacation. I make believe and impartially perform the duties of the office of Mayor Proctor, City Councilman, and Corporation of the Board, to the best of my ability. I further swear that I do not advocate, nor am I a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the Government of the United States or of this state by force or violence. Yeah, I am in this position. I will not advocate or become a member of any political party or organization that advocates for the overthrow of the Government of the United States or of this state by force or violence. So help me God.
So she's got a pen if you want to sign, and, um, give her your oath with the books. And I will then... Call for a... A motion to adjourn.
Before we do the motion to adjourn, I have a little gift to give to the mayor for all her years as mayor, and also as a compliment. Stick a bar so she has something to do for a long time.
He knows me well, thank you, sir. And thank you for your service. You've come on and off of here as we've needed you over the years, and served your city well.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Vote for adjournment. I don't think I have it.
No, no.
I'm sorry.
I interrupt.
That's okay, that's right. James?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Larry? And Bob?
Yes.
Okay, it's on you.